Good evening and welcome to the May 23 meeting of the Glendale City Council being called to order at 6:04 PM. May we have roll call, please?
Yes, council members, Asaterian, Devine.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Brotman.
Here. And may we have your report, please?
It's the flag salute first.
Oh, I always do that. Okay. Please raise, please rise for the flag salute. Place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for the invocation.
Let's begin by acknowledging that we are standing on the indigenous lands of the Gabrielino Tongwa people. I will now read an edited version of a prayer to Mother Earth by Lucy Bunch. We pray to you, Mother Earth, with gratitude for your holding and sustaining love, for the air, water, and soil that feed us, for the mountains and rivers and oceans that calm our spirits, for loving and supporting all beings and all creation. Help us to remember our place in the great web of life. Help us to remember that we are but a part of this great web and that we must do our part for all life. Forgive us for our ignorance and willful disregard of the damage we have done to you, to the air and the waters and the soil and the life of this beautiful planet. We ask you, Mother Earth, for fortitude, to uphold our part in reversing the damage we have caused, to make and sustain a commitment to do our part to heal the planet. Mother Earth, in gratitude and humility, we ask that you hold us and sustain us as we strive to live in connection with you and all life. Thank you.
Thank you. You may be seated. And now may we have your report?
The agenda for the May 23 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Wednesday, May 17, 2023, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And what is next, please?
Next, our presentation and appointments. A, the regular meeting for City Council on May 30, 2023, has been canceled. The next regular meeting will be held on June 6, 2023.
Okay, and what's next?
Next is the proclamation for National Public Works Week.
Okay, and I have the honor of making this proclamation. And who will be receiving it? Mr. Maroni?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council.
Will it be you?
No, it's not me. But before, if I may-
Okay, sure. You have something to say before I read the proclamation? Please go, please go ahead.
Well, actually, we have a video that we would like to show you. This is in honor of the National Public Works, which is every year at the third week in May, that thousands and hundreds of thousands of professionals throughout the country work in different fields, such as fixing our streets, our roads, our potholes, our sewer system, our storm drain system. And so, in honor of those folks and the hardworking people we have here in Glendale, we want to show you this quick two-minute video representing the work that they do. The city of Glendale Public Works Department is here for you. The Public Works Department keeps communities strong through an array of services and transportation, wastewater and stormwater treatment, public buildings and spaces, solid waste, street maintenance, and more. The Public Works Department is responsible for the preservation, maintenance, and upgrade of the city's infrastructure for the benefit of our residents, businesses, and visitors. The department has had a highly productive year, marked by numerous accomplishments and milestones. Some of our notable achievements include the completion of $14 million worth of capital improvement projects resulting in five miles of newly paved city roadways, 11,300 linear feet of curbs and gutters, 56,000 square foot of sidewalk, 6088 curb ramps, improvements to traffic signals at 50 intersections, and carried out essential repairs to over 8,000 feet of sewer networks and 2,500 potholes. These activities are part of Public Works' robust capital improvement program covering streets, sidewalks, streetlights, traffic signals, street trees, parks, public buildings, park facilities, sewer and storm drain systems. As a department that prioritizes both safety and convenience, we have taken steps to enhance public safety while ensuring convenience for residents and visitors. Since the adoption of the pedestrian master plan in 2021, Public Works has completed or has underdesigned many of the short-term, medium-term, as well as long-term projects as identified in the pedestrian master plan. Public Works has installed protected bike lanes, completed various traffic signal enhancements, and has made overall improvements to streets, curbs, and sidewalks, all of which aims to improve the safety and mobility of residents and drivers. We also initiated a mobile payment solution for existing metered parking locations throughout the city. This innovative solution promotes convenience by offering flexibility and ease of use. In an effort to foster and promote sustainability, the Public Works Department has added new environmentally friendly CNG Beeline buses, hybrid police patrol vehicles, and inspector vehicles to its fleet. In addition, the Public Works Integrated Waste Division serves the community with its full fleet of near-zero emission refuse trucks. To continue improving the quality of life our residents expect in our community and to serve Glendale's zero-waste sustainability goals, Public Works implemented a residential and commercial organics waste collection program this past year, where all organics waste is now being recycled into mulch and compost or converted into biogas. We hosted two compost distribution events at City Lot 30 on North Verdugo Road, distributing a total of 19 tons of compost. These events promote sustainability and provide residents with valuable resources for their gardening and landscaping needs. The Public Works Department was awarded three tree planting grants totaling over $900,000. As part of these grants, we are planting over 1,300 trees along city streets and within parks. The full cost of this initiative is being reimbursed to the city, ensuring a greener and more vibrant environment. Whether it be physically through infrastructure or inspirationally through services to the Glendale community, our team strives to connect the world through Public Works.
Thank you. Such a nice voice. Okay, well, I will read the proclamation, or do you have, you have more?
We just have Mr. Carlos Linares, our street superintendent. If I could ask him to come up and he's going to accept the proclamation on behalf of the Public Works Department.
Okay, so you have the honors. Well, let me, let me read the proclamation, and then, and then we'll ask you to say a few words, okay? All right, so the proclamation reads, "Whereas public works projects and services are critical to the growth and quality of life in the city of Glendale and are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, through the efforts of our Public Works Department, Glendale remains a safe and comfortable community in which to reside, and whereas the support of informed citizens is vital to the efficient maintenance and operation of the city's infrastructure, including operations such as street maintenance and urban forestry services, traffic and civil engineering, traffic signal management, facilities management, integrated waste management, transit and fleet services. And whereas the employees of the Public Works Department are committed to providing daily infrastructure services in a quality manner, and whereas a well-planned, designed, and maintained municipal infrastructure is vitally dependent upon a team of people dedicated to professional excellence, customer satisfaction, and who strive to accomplish their everyday tasks efficiently, effectively, and with accountability to the community they serve. Now therefore, I, Daniel Brotman, Mayor of the city of Glendale, do hereby proclaim May 21 through 27, 2023, as National Public Works Week, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations in the city of Glendale to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing for our local infrastructure and to recognize the contributions which Public Works officials make every day to the betterment of our residents' health, safety, comfort, and quality of life."
Thank you. Good evening to all. My name is Carlos Linares. I'm Public Works' managed services, street superintendent to the mayor, to all City Council members present, and all those who are present. On behalf of all Public Works staff, I'd like to accept this proclamation. And I want to thank you for taking it into consideration and giving it to us.
Thank you. And I'm going to come down and we'll have a photo op.
Okay.
Okay? You get the whole, you get the whole. And let's have all of our Public Works friends come around.
Smile.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, I just want to-
Yes, Councilmember Devine.
Thank you. I just want to, they, they left, but I just wanted to let Public Works and Yazden and your staff, I think you're probably one of our hardest-working groups out there in the city. And I have to tell you that every time I go by and they're working like crazy, digging ditches and holes in the ground and fixing, they're always smiling. And they're so friendly, and I really appreciate that. And again, thank you for, for all that you do for our city.
Thank you. And we actually have a speaker who would like to say a few words about Public Works, Mr. Mohill.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Brotman. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this subject. My introduction to Public Works was about 12 years ago, when my wife and I were walking in front of, at Venice Hospital, and she did a trip and fall on the sidewalk. I came back to the city and I, in City Council, I said, you know what? I'm not going to sue the city for not fixing the sidewalks. Just do me a favor. Let's pay the $150 bill for my wife's damage on her feet, you know? And please have someone from Public Works repair the sidewalk ASAP. And guess what? Within 30 days, it was fixed. Now, I often criticize our infrastructure in this city. But you know what? We ought to look at ourselves compared to other cities. I was in Los Angeles a few days ago, and their roads are horrible. Their streets are horrible. Their sidewalks are, they're crumbling. Our roads and sidewalks are crumbling, but those, their roads and crumbling are more. Now, I know we can do better in Glendale, because that's why we live in Glendale. We don't live in Los Angeles. That's why people from Los Angeles want to live in Glendale. Of course, it costs a lot of money to live in Glendale, be it rent or housing. But Glendale is a safe, well-maintained city. And because of our Public Works Department, we'd like to thank you and your men and women in the department. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your kind words. Okay, what is next?
Next, our consent items, including minutes. The following our routine may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Okay, and I understand Councilmember Najarian is interested in pulling item 4C, is that correct?
That's correct.
And I would like to pull item 4B. So if I could get a motion to move the balance of the consent calendar?
I'll move the balance.
Okay, second?
Second.
We have a second. And roll call, please?
Councilmembers Asaterian, Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Brotman.
Yes, thank you. And now, could you read 4B into the record, please?
Yes, Consent Item B, Public Works, Regarding City of Glendale Measure R Subregional Program Update Motion Approving New Programming and Modifications to Existing Programming to the Adopted Measure R Subregional Program.
Okay, thank you. And maybe I'll just ask my questions. Is that the best way to do it, rather than go through the whole item? Because it's, there's quite a lot.
Mayor Brotman, you don't have to unless you want a quick overview of the item before you ask your questions, or we can go directly to your questions.
Okay, well, let's maybe just very high level what this item is for people that are here that haven't read the report, just so they know what we're talking about.
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, on an annual basis, we provide a status report on our Measure R projects and expenditures. And this year, we basically have a list of all the projects that have been completed to date since the inception of Measure R. We also talk about the projects that we have under agreement with Metro and the projects that are going to be going under agreement. So there are different pots of monies that we report on and talk about for the different categories of Measure R.
Okay, thank you. So I have just, I think there are four things, or maybe three. One of them is, I see there's a project that's, I guess, already in design to widen the freeway onramps, the, 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 two freeway onramps at Mountain. Could you explain that? I know we have two full lanes coming off the northbound, and on all the others, we have kind of a two-to-one merge situation. What's the, what's behind this widening?
Absolutely. I'm going to ask Mr. Organician to come up and provide an explanation, brief overview of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Maroni. Good evening, Mayor Brotman, members of City Council. This project is a project that is a carryover from many years ago. We had applied for Measure R subregional funding to make improvements to the ramps at Mountain Street and the SR2 freeway, primarily on northbound, to improve exit to the Camino San Rafael neighborhood. That ramp, at this moment, Caltrans is incorporating a project on the freeway. They've been doing it for many years now. They have to conduct some studies to be able to determine if we are eligible to use Measure R funding to be able to complete any improvements on those ramp exits. So at the moment, the reason why it says preliminary project planning is we're waiting for Caltrans to get back to us to let us know if Measure R funding would be eligible.
But what is the issue we're trying to resolve? I mean, that's, that's one that I frequently use. I, yeah.
The details were prior to my, with the city, so we'd have to look, look back at it and get back to you.
Could we do that? Could we do that? Yeah, I'd like to see what's going on there. And somebody I know who, who understands these things a lot better than me, and I'm sure you understand these things a lot better than me, said that increasing the level of service there could potentially exacerbate cut-through, local cut-through traffic on North Verdugo, on East Glen Oaks, and Rossmoyn. I'm not sure exactly how that works. It's above my pay grade, but maybe we can look into that, because we don't want to do anything that's going to increase people diverting off of the freeway there and then taking a surface road perhaps. I don't know how it works. So just putting it out there. The next one is, there's a project called the Downtown Glendale Signals and Mobility Project, where it talks about upgrading push buttons to LPI. And for those who don't know, that's a leading pedestrian interval or a pedestrian head start, which is great. Pedestrian head starts are, I think, well-known to reduce the risk of pedestrian accidents. But it goes back, it reminds me of something I brought up like three years ago, never got anywhere with, but it's, in a lot of downtowns now, where people are moving to a kind of an auto phase for pedestrians. I just got back from Washington DC, and in the entire downtown, you know, the pedestrian walks up to the signal, and there is a phase for the pedestrian to cross. There's no button to push. So it's regularly scheduled. And that is, is definitely a more pedestrian-friendly approach, rather than having to go and beg, is the term. Remember beg buttons? So I would like us to look at, in our downtown, and I don't know how we go about this, but consider that. That seems to be a kind of a modern urban planning, walkability type of strategy. And I, and I would like to see if we're doing this, that rather than replace buttons, we eliminate buttons. Just, just want to mention that. And I'm not talking about the buttons for a mid-block crossing, for an RRFB or a HAWK. Obviously, those, you want to push that button for the, the person mid-block. I'm talking about the standard intersection buttons. And then the last thing I have is, under one of the programs, I think it's 5AF, you talk about, well, it's 5A, talking about some raised medians. And I'm not quite sure what these raised medians are, but the concern that was expressed to me is with regard to San Fernando and Sonora. I don't know if these raised medians are going to be on the Sonora approach, but the message that I got was from a parent who takes his kid to school and crosses this intersection every single school day, and apparently there are other parents that do that too, who says it's, it's that intersection there, the San Fernando-Sonora is, is a major hazard. I think we've talked about that intersection. Wants to see a fix to that in the bike plan and is concerned about us investing in hardscape that might interfere with something that we want to do down the road with the bike plan. So can we kind of keep an eye on that and not do any hardscape investment if the, if it's, let's, let's see what we need to do to make that intersection safer? Because I think, I think he brings his kids to, his kid to Franklin. And so, and apparently there are other, other parents that bring their kids on bikes. So that was it. I just wanted to raise those points. All right, thank you. And with that, can we move the, can we get a motion on this item?
I'll move 4, 4B.
Second.
Okay, and roll call, please?
Councilmembers Asaterian, Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Brotman.
Yes. And now, could you read 4C into the record, please?
Yes, Human Resources Regarding Contract Award for Workers' Compensation, Third-Party Administrator Services, and Bill Review for All the City's Work-Related Injuries. One, Motion Authorizing City Manager to Execute a Professional Services Agreement with AdminSure Inc. to Provide Third-Party Administrator Services and Bill Review for All the City's Work-Related Injuries for a Period of Three Years with Two One-Year Options to Renew.
Okay.
Okay, I asked for this to be pulled, and I want to give some background that probably since 2017, there has been a local business, woman-owned business, who has reviewed the Glendale protocols for this, these services, and has indicated that they were lacking, that the performance of the incumbent, I believe the incumbent was AdminSure at that time, was lacking. And this, this company was directed to speak to the then-human resources director, Matt Doyle. They spoke for many weeks. After coming away with meetings from Matt Doyle, this person was convinced that the city was not administering the performance of the AdminSure company. This person insisted that there was savings which the city could, could reap from proper administration. This person was directed to wait until, I think, for the next RFP to come out. So what we have here is an RFP that's come out, and the, lo and behold, the favorite incumbent not only gets to keep the current position, but is given additional duties. The, and I'm just not, I just don't feel comfortable with that. My discussions, which just happened a few days ago, were that the, the interview and the RFP process was not conducted properly, that there were biases against this company, perhaps for being such a squeaky wheel several years before. And unfortunately, in the report, we just have a fait accompli that the winner of this RFP was AdminSure, with no scores of the other candidates, with no discussion of any shortcomings. And I don't think that's proper. And this is not something that I can vote for at this point.
Oh, Councilmember Kasakian, please.
Mayor, I would like staff to have an opportunity to respond, but I share some of the same concerns that Mr. Najarian did. I did receive an explanation from staff, a brief one, that this would consolidate or streamline some services. But I was approached by this local business that had been working for the city for a number of years as well. And I think that I definitely would like a more thorough explanation of this before voting on this item.
Okay. Mr. Galanian, can we?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, I'm going to invite Paula Adams, our chief human resource officer, to provide that explanation on the process. I will tell you this much, though, the process and the final selection was not done solely by Ms. Adams. It was a committee that reviewed the proposals and deemed AdminSure as to the most qualified for the services that are specified in the RFP, as well as the pricing that was very competitive compared to others. Ms. Adams and I have spoken with the owner of that company, explained the process that they have gone through, and Ms. Adams will share the details with you momentarily.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman, members of the City Council. This RFP was last let in 2016, with the public safety portion of workers' comp going to AdminSure. The in-house claims, meaning claims for civilian personnel, stayed with city personnel. The in-house claims, meaning claims for civilian personnel, stayed with city personnel. And the Lean On Me firm took over bill review for civilian claims that were not a part of public safety. Both Lean On Me and AdminSure have performed well during the contract time, so there are no issues with the performance of either firm. What has taken place from 2016 to present day is the civilian claims, in-house claims, processed by the human resources team have been steadily declining. So we don't have the inventory to substantiate five full-time employees managing a de minimis amount of claims. It is a very good story to tell that we have fewer civilian injuries, but to retain five full-time staff for not many claims did not make the best business sense. During the RFP review process, we had a complement of various stakeholders and leaders on the review committee, a leader from the finance department, city attorney, another city agency, myself, and the workers' comp administrator. Again, there were no performance issues for either firm. The RFP committee voted unanimously for a full third-party administrator program to go to AdminSure. It just made the best business sense for the price per claim that they were offering. And AdminSure also is fully automated. The city of Glendale is heavily reliant on paper. We're not the most progressive in this area of claims management and claims processing. They're fully automated. They gave the best price per claim. That also includes the bill review portion that Lean On Me was handling for civilian personnel. The president and owner of AdminSure is here. I think that Ms. Vargas Flores can speak to her firm, having been in business since 1982, responsible, a plethora of clients and municipal government are using them. I don't think that many of us who have selected them would be going with someone who was inadequate. Again, no performance issues with either firm. They both perform just fine. But we have an issue in our human resources department where we have gaps in services in other areas. The workers' comp team, they're well-educated. They can be retrained and taught to do recruitment and selection activities and benefits activities and other areas where we have a gap in service. It just made the best business sense to go with a full party, a full program with a third-party administrator. AdminSure gave the best pricing, and I can retrain other staff to do other things in the human resources department. I don't have any relationship with either of these firms. They are both new to me, so I am not leaning one way or the other. I looked at the data. I looked at the proposal. The RFP team reviewed it with me after the review and the unanimous decision. That's how we landed, where we landed.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I have a couple of questions. So isn't it a city policy to put down the scores when you have an RFP, to put down the scores of the other candidates?
Councilmember Najarian, that's practice. You are correct. As long as we collect and we utilize the scoring method. I'm not sure if in this process, scoring was used to rank the proposers.
I think it was. It says the criteria used to review was as follows.
I think the question, Mr. Galan, is whether it's a policy to put the scores in the report, and I don't think that it is.
That's why I said it's a practice that we've followed.
So it is not a practice? If we have an RFP out there, we just hear the conclusion that so-and-so won?
No.
In fact, what Ms. Adams said was that they voted unanimously. This should not have been a vote. This should have been a tabulation of scores, right? It's not like who's in favor of so-and-so, raise your hand. It's look at the scores. The scores make the decision. So I hope you can understand that I'm a little bit uncomfortable. And as I said, I will not be voting for this today. If you want to go through, if you want to assuage my concerns at some later time, I'm perfectly willing to sit down and talk, but I see too many. In light of the history of this issue, where a local business has complained that she's getting, the company, woman-owned business, is getting the short end in dealing with city staff, and now here we come. There's no scores. There's a statement that there was a vote taken. Shouldn't have been a vote. So I just want to leave it at that. You told me not to die on this hill. Sometimes I don't listen to advice when I should, but I just like to stick up for fairness. I mean, that's what I'm all about, and it gets me in trouble sometimes. But for this item, someone can move it. I will not be voting for it.
Councilmember Najarian, your points and concerns are fair and well-positioned. I just wanted to give Ms. Adams an opportunity to, again, share the details of whether they use scoring or another method of selecting the final, making the final decision on the selection of the vendor.
Okay, Mayor Brotman, members of the city council, we did score. So if I use the wrong terminology in saying it was a unanimous vote, what I should have said was the firm with the highest scoring came out on top by each of the people on the RFP panel. So I phrased it incorrectly. We did score. The scoring is public record. We didn't put it in the report, but the record is public, and we're happy to share it.
Okay. Councilmember Kasakian.
Sure, I think that we should table this until we have some more explanation as to... A couple of things. I understand how the scoring was, but it would have been nice, at least in the briefings, for us to be presented with the scoring to understand it. And I'll tell you one of the reasons why. I understand that both companies have performed well for the sake of the city. One is a homegrown company. The other one is a larger company outside of here in the city. I think, I believe, in Ontario, and nothing against Ontario. We have many friends in Ontario. But in terms of how we've communicated to the others, especially with a company that has a longstanding relationship, it doesn't sit well with me. I think that we could have had some more transparency in this, both not necessarily counsel as well, but also for the person that was not going to receive an extension of the contract of working with the city. So for that reason, I would not vote for approval for this for this evening. And if that means there's a deadlock, then it gets continued.
Okay, well, if that's the case, let's not have a vote. We can continue it to the meeting, I guess, in two weeks. Is that going to present a problem? Any deadlines with contracts or anything else? Or are we going to be okay?
The contract expires at the end of June.
At the end of June? So we do have a little bit of time. Okay, so is that acceptable? We'll put it on the...
June 6, my apologies.
Yeah, our next meeting.
Mr. Najarian, Councilmember Najarian is not going to be here.
I am not available June 6.
Okay, well, let's work out an appropriate date. Maybe it's the date after that, or maybe we just go ahead. I mean, we know where you stand. But it sounds like today is not the day to do this, so, okay? So we will continue the item.
Council's direction, we'll bring it back on the 6th or the 13th.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so what is next, Madam Clerk?
Next, our city council and staff comments.
Councilmember Devine, would you like to go first?
Sure, that'd be fine. First of all, I want to commend Community Services and Parks for another fun-filled senior festival and the celebration of the 90-year-olds and older. And that was held down on Artsakh, and it was fantastic, lots of fun. And, you know, Community Services and Parks always does such a great job. And I just want to congratulate Maggie and the rest of the staff that put that party on. I want to make an announcement tonight as it's Mental Health Awareness Month. And I feel our city should be making every effort to help those who are experiencing depression, anxiety, thoughts of suicide, loneliness, and other mental health common disorders. To that end, I want to announce that I've been working with, to present a program to council at a later date called Friendship Bench Program. So far, I've spoken with GCC, Adventist Health Glendale, Noon Rotary, and other entities in our city who are interested in partnering with us, with the program. This is a mental health program that began in Zimbabwe, and it is now very active in New York City. And what it involves is a cognitive behavior therapy program in which lay volunteers, just like you and I, who will sit on a bench and simply talk to those that need someone to talk to so that they can deal with their mental health issues. It's really, it's been proven that talking helps. So I'd like to see a program like this come to Glendale would be at the forefront. I'm going to come back to council to ask that the Friendship Bench Program be agendized so that we can get started on this program to help those suffering, trying to cope with these common mental disorders. The community-wide well-being initiative is addressing mental health. That's one of their three prominent goals. And they're going to be addressing this for the next three years. And this program, this Friendship Bench Program, will fit perfectly into their efforts. Dr. Ramela Markarian at Adventist Health Glendale has shown interest in collaborating with the city on this program, and I hope to get other hospitals and nonprofits involved and volunteers from all over our city in this citywide effort to deal with and to cope with mental health issues. So I just wanted to bring that up tonight because it's Mental Health Awareness Month. It sounds like I've spoken to professionals, and they think it's a wonderful idea. So I'm hoping that eventually, we can get all of our ducks in a row and bring it to council, and hopefully, I can get support from the council to agendize this issue and bring it to fruition in our city. Because we all know how important these mental health issues are and to raise awareness and to help our residents get through these tough times. And I think it's really important that we get GCC on board because young people, these college students, have stress, anxiety, all of these issues that they can, that perhaps a program like this can be of service to them as well. So that will, hopefully, I'll be bringing that in the future. Sure.
So can we put that, or should we put that on? My apologies. On our agenda, using our new procedure, could we put that on as a new business item for our next meeting so that we can talk about getting it agendized? Is that what you would like to do?
Eventually.
Not ready yet?
I don't think we're ready. We're still getting our pieces put together.
I see.
We have groups that might want to donate benches so we can get a head start. We want to figure out how we can get volunteers in the city. And our police department is willing to come on board and help out. So we have a lot of different moving parts. So when we're ready with the program, I'll bring it forward, and we can agendize it hopefully and move forward.
Okay, that does sound very interesting. Okay, but I'll leave that with you.
And finally, and this is a bit of a sad note, I'd like to request that council be adjourned this evening in memory and honor of Razmik Gregorian, passed away recently. Razmik was born in Iran after his grandparents escaped the Armenian genocide. He received his bachelor's of arts degree from Metropolitan University in Manchester, England, and his diploma in art and technique of filmmaking from the London International Film School. He then immigrated to the US and spent the rest of his life in California. He's the longest-serving commissioner, 13 years, of the Arts and Culture Commission in the city of Glendale and served as a committee member for the Landlord-Tenants Ad-hoc Committee for the city of Glendale. Razmik was an art enthusiast, an active member of his community, and an avid traveler. He traveled to nearly 70 countries. He spoke Armenian, English, and Persian, and was acquainted with Spanish, French, and Turkish. His absence will be greatly noticed in his community and in this city. And I know his passion for the Arts and Culture Commission was beyond reproach. He loved that position. And as I say, he will be missed. So I request that we adjourn tonight's meeting in his memory. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kasakian.
Yeah, I want to echo the words of Councilmember Devine about our late commissioner and friend Razmik Gregorian. I had an opportunity to visit with the family at the memorial service that was held last week, and it was unexpected. By the way, in addition to the Arts and Culture Commission, Mr. Gregorian served on our ad-hoc tenant landlord committee as well. So collectively, he had, he wasn't just relegated to the arts. He truly believed public service was a calling. If he believed in something, if anyone wants to go back and watch some of the meetings that he served on, he was definitely outspoken. He made his opinions known. He was a lover of the arts, very proud of his Armenian heritage. I had the opportunity to hang out with him a little bit at the LA Arts Show, which is this giant art show that happens at the LA Convention Center. And he was truly in his element. He knew everyone. He was introducing me to folks and saying, you know, you should talk to this artist. This artist should do something for Glendale. And he had such a love for life, and it's a flame to soon extinguish till he'll be missed. So condolences to his family. And as we say in Armenian, may his soul be illuminated in heaven.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Najarian?
I've said too much already, this man.
Okay. Is anybody, did anybody attend the Fix-It Clinic or the Repair Cafe? No, okay. I thought somebody could talk about that. But I unfortunately was away, so I wasn't able to. So, okay, I have a few things to share. First, as some of you may know, I spent last week in Baltimore attending a convening of the Bloomberg Philanthropies City Data Alliance, which we applied to, staff worked on this some time ago, and we applied to this program. It's a very prestigious program. It's competitive. And 20 cities were selected to be part of this year's cohort. And I was able to, I had the honor of representing us at this convening. This is a six-month program, so the event I attended is just the kickoff. It's a six-month program during which we will work with experts from Bloomberg and Johns Hopkins University to develop a citywide data strategy. I know that's a bit of a nebulous term, but essentially, it means a strategy to advance the city's use of data to improve outcomes for our residents. It includes things like data quality, transparency, governance, capacity building, and culture. The idea is that everything we do, every policy decision we make, every program we launch, should be informed by evidence and facts. And there should be a methodological rigor behind these things that we do. So I think this is really exciting. There are two... There are two, basically two programs of one or two tracks. One is called a Data Accelerator. Track All the Cities Participate in This. And then there's a separate track which is specific to procurement. So we're going to be looking at some aspects of how we do procurement and trying to apply data tools to improve outcomes. We get the benefit of expert coaching and resources. Bloomberg, I'll tell you, does not skimp. They take this very, very seriously. This whole event was kind of choreographed down to the minute. So you could tell these people are with it. And we are going to have the first person from Bloomberg come out, I think in just a couple of weeks, to sit down with staff and start working on this six-month program. There were, there was an interesting mix of cities, large and small. A few large cities, the city of D.C., the mayor was part of this, the city of Seattle, Charlotte, North Carolina, and a lot of cities kind of more or less our size. Rochester, Little Rock, Arkansas, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I mean, they were from all over. Actually, we were the only city represented from California. There were also a number of cities from Latin America that were part of this. So a very interesting mix. Yeah, so I mean, one thing that is different with us, and I did feel at times like a fish out of water because all the other cities are strong mayor cities. They're cities where the mayor is the executive. We obviously have a different arrangement here. So I think it would have been better if they had done a cohort that was just of cities that are, you know, city manager run. They didn't do it that way. But, so we'll have to sit down and figure out how we make this a full council effort because I don't want to just go make a unilateral decision on things that we're going to apply this to. I want it to be a consensus process and I want it to be lasting. So anyway, I thought I would share that because people might have seen an article in the news press about it. I have one more thing. And that is that we have a birthday girl in the audience, Joanne Hedge. And I have a mayor's commendation for Ms. Hedge so that she can frame this and put it up on the wall in her house. And I would ask that she come to the podium so I could read this commendation. And it, I think it's your 40th?
Double that.
Double that, double that, okay. I wanted you to say it, not me, okay. But I'll read, I'll read the commendation, okay? So, "Thank you for your dedication to the Glendale Rancho neighborhood by promoting recognition and preserving the values of this historic community. Since 1999, as the founder of the Glendale Rancho Neighborhood Association, your hard work to improve Rancho residents' quality of life by dynamic interplay between residents, city council, and staff is admirable. Your input with city staff to design and bring to fruition the sturdy stone equestrian identity monument at Glendale Rancho's border on Riverside Drive is commendable. On behalf of the city of Glendale, happy birthday, and I wish you continued health, happiness, and success. Signed, Daniel Brockman." And I think we should all go down for a photo op with Ms. Hedge. How's that?
That'd be fun.
Let's all go down for a photo op, okay?
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. You get to, happy birthday.
Do we need to get you a little stand right?
We'll go. Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. You're very special, so we don't do this too often. Okay, so that is it for, does staff have any comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So what is next, Madam Clerk?
Next are community event announcements. We have two-speaker cards and three callers.
Okay. So we'll start with Mike Mohill, three minutes, please.
Good evening, Mayor Brockman, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. First of all, I'd like to thank council for approving council districts. You mentioned six districts in your report. But hopefully it's still a flow. It can maybe be seven or nine. That way, everybody. And it should be based on area and not on population. And also an elected mayor, finally. Long ago in that route, I wish council would suggest having an elected city attorney, finally. We have an appointed one all these years, and we know where that's gone. Let's try the other way around. Let's make it a political position and maybe we'll have better results with our law department. Number three, Paula Devine, Mayor.
Former.
Term limits. I remember years ago you said only two could get the job done. That's a total of how many years? Eight years. We have in Gondio City, four, three, four years. That's 12 years. Did you know, ladies and gentlemen, the viewing audience, the governor of California and the President of the United States, they only have two four-year terms? So why are our council members more important than the governor or the President of the United States? Please bring back Councilwoman Paula Devine, term limits, and make it two. Because, you know, we're no better than, you know, the higher-ups. Okay. Now, another issue that concerns me is the invocation that we have every week from the city clerk's position. It's an elected position. And it's supposed to be non-political, but she makes it political. I've asked her several times, please do not make it political. She brings up these Indians that were here 100 years ago, and we walk on their land. Well, you know what? We have the American, the U.S. Army. They're here every day protecting us. Let's bring their names up too. And now tonight she brings in climate change. What does climate change have to do with invocation? Invocation is supposed to be religious in nature, not political. Now, I always thought we should have an elected city clerk, but perhaps we ought to make the city clerk position appointed. Because she's, I've asked her several times, don't be political. And she continues to be political. I hate to embarrass you, ma'am, but you know, you're, you all would be called a carpet banker. You're not even here from Glendale. You're from South Pasadena. You know, you are from South Pasadena, and you got elected because the Democratic Party put your name in. Shame on that party. Get all you had, and also, yeah, and I saw identity politics. Not only were you from there, but you were one.
Thank you very much.
Please, stop the politics.
Next speaker, Elizabeth Manassarian.
Good evening, Mayor Brockman and council members. My name is Elizabeth Manassarian. I'm a member of the Rotary Club of Glendale Noon. And it is my pleasure and honor to be inviting all of you to our event called Cars, Called Cars for Cops and Kids, which is going to take place on June 4th, Sunday, June 4th, from 9:00 to 1:00. And it is a car show. And so far, we have over 100 cars that are registered online. That means that on the day of, we will probably go over 300 cars. And we have the Boy Scouts of America participating. We have games and a climbing wall for kids and many games, foods, and a lot of activities. So we'd love for all of you to be there. So this is our invitation to all of you. I also wanted to extend our support to Councilmember Paula Devine for bringing the Friendship Bench idea. I think that, I'm speaking on behalf of Glendale Rotary Club Noon, that we would love to support something like that because I think we're all members of Glendale family, would love to do something for our brothers and sisters in the city of Glendale. And I know that we can have either volunteers or however we can help so that you may count on us as well. So thank you very much for bringing that to the council. And thank you for the council for listening to me. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can we ask, Elizabeth, the Cops for Cars for Cops and Kids is at?
Oh, Verdugo Park. Thank you for reminding me.
You're welcome. Nine to one.
And thank you for the Parks and Rec for always, always supporting us. And the city of Glendale has always been a great support. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have three callers?
Callers, yes. Our first caller is Zalik Sinanya. Zalik, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Haryan of state of Cal.
Hi.
Yes, I'm in Yerek's of Pioneer Drive. Petrafa Ramsi in Tanti Mat. Kswela Me Shinar Chum. Ah, Bora Asduma, Asdala Merbola, and Tani Kand, Tani Ki. Ah, Tani Ki Adha Meribra. Yes, I'm here, Kurehav, who men special needs. Yes, Kusner, who men are, testik, petro me mech. Yes, Aravutva, Jama Yothi. Ah, Me Zenerov, Menk Zartu Menk, Wonso, Limenk, Dzogtum Mech. O, Amboch, Zainera. Wortun, Irara Galishar, Juma, Asduma, Amen, Ni, Vanibra. Sats, Aravutva, Menk, Nishab, Deprosen, Genu, Maftan, Yereh, Hamer, Bistro, Teratzen. I am Zainerit, Kenzartum, Chenka, Vanmuk, Omno, Shven. Deprosid, Galis, Jama, Yerekin, Yerekans, Kessit, Yerku, Therapista, Gali, Mechtum. Yes, Nun, Zevi, Etie, Effektan, Me, Therapistia, Ashkat, Angst, Neri, Head. Yes, Alkhasa, Min, Nerwein, Hamak, Ak, Yes, Art, Can, Yot, Tal, Dramech. Wot, Best Mal, Yes, Ni, Maruk, Chumu, Kort, Senna, Me, Zeneri, Ed. Tande, Sar, Ven, Mech. Uh, Kunt, Chuman, Yet, Kanar, Borah, In, Dok, Neck. In, Chum, Ni, Ban, Mit, Ra, Ki, Will, Ok, Ed. In, Chum, Ni, Ban, Yes, Chenka, Shal, Magen. Hen, Sima, In, Kok, Kest, Yereh, High, Therapist, Nen. Yes, Petka, I, 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 Angler, Nizbo, Vav, Nila, Bad, Katren. Yes, Uzume, Karu, Bo, Hankel, Iran, I, I, Karu, Khosan. Kunt, Chuman, Des, Bad, Mech, Yes, Kellam, City Hall. But, So Far, Watch, Mech, Karwats, Lin, Has, Kana, Okni. So, Kunt, Chuman, Duket, Khan, Yereh, Hamer, Im, Pa, Shpan, Mech. Yereh, Hamer, Di, Hamad, Ban, Es, Amis, Won, Sast, Kafa. Mental, Healthy, Amis, Na, Duk, Amen, In, Chun, Nis, Me. Kunt, Chuman, Okni, Me, N, Tani Ki, Bor, O, It, Up. Yerku, Yereh, Hamer, Um, Ni, Petka, Bor, I, I, Karu, Chinen. Yes, Aruk, San, O, Lini, Bor, I, I, Take, Care, Ami, Snarak, Galis.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Yes, yes, Councilmember Kusakian.
I know that staff will probably translate that lady's comments and present them to us. But just to summarize it, she lives across from our affordable housing project on Pioneer and has special needs children. And the noise and the impacts of the construction are having a severe impact on their quality of life. I hope staff may, will try to follow up with her. And I don't know if anything can be done. She mentioned relocation or assistance with relocation. I don't know if the city has the means to do anything like that. But in as much as we can help, I don't know what can be done. Perhaps maybe soundproofing some windows or whatever that would assist. That'd be, it's certainly something I'd like us to see.
Most definitely, Councilmember Kusakian, Member of City Council. We will, we have the contact information.
Follow-up, okay.
Staff will follow up and see what we can do to mitigate some of the concerns.
It's a hard situation. And these things go on for a long time, too.
It's a large project, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, our next caller?
Our next caller is Edwin. Edwin, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi, good evening. Hi, Councilmember Devine. Hi, Mayor Brockman. How you guys doing tonight?
Good.
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 Good, Edwin. Thank you.
Yes. I just, I just want to say thank you so much for talking about Mental Health Awareness Month because the thing about mental health is we want to help prevent people who are experiencing mental health crisis from resorting to suicide. The good, good thing you brought Mental Health Awareness Month. I just wanted to talk about a three-digit phone number that the FCC came out with. It's a phone number that you can call. It's called the Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. So anyone who's experiencing a mental health crisis or thinking about committing suicide, they can call this three-digit number. It's called 988. And basically what it is, it's not a new number. It was an 800 number that you can call. But now, the FCC last year launched the 988 phone number that you can call, the National Suicide Prevention Line. It's a three-digit number. It's nationwide. And you can call or text for anyone who's experiencing suicide or mental health crisis. And I don't know if you know about it, but I encourage you to like Google 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline to learn more about it. One more thing I would like to see is, I would like to see that 988 phone number be disclosed to the public by posting signs around town, posting on the side of the cop cars. Because I see on the cop cars it says, "Emergency, Dial 911." I would like to see something that says, "Experiencing suicide or mental health crisis, call 988." And that's the thing I would like to see. Another thing that I'd like to also see displayed on the cop cars is when it says, "Emergency, Call 911," I would like that to be changed to say, so I could say, "Emergency, Call or Text 911." A lot of people don't know that you can now text 911. Most of the time, it's for people who are in very dangerous situations that they cannot call 911, but they could text 911. And it's also beneficial for people who are deaf, who can't speak, to text 911. That's all I have to say. And thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I know we've, we've mentioned 988 here on several occasions, but it's always good to remind people again of that. And, you know, putting that out there more actually is a very good idea. So thank you, Edwin, for those suggestions. And we have another caller?
Yes, our final caller is Monica Campagna. Monica, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Brockman, City Council and City Staff. I was actually calling about the Repair Cafe because I did get to go this Saturday. And I just wanted to thank the Glendale Library and Office of Sustainability and the Repair Cafe and all the staff that worked on it. It was great. There was just like so much energy there. It was buzzing. And whenever anyone had a repair that got completed, you hear these groups of people break out and cheering. It was just lovely. It was really lovely. So, and there was a piano player. It was really great. So I hope you guys will do it again. I managed to get one out of two things repaired, which was awesome. And I also wanted to say happy birthday to Joanne Hedge, who is my neighbor. And thank you so much, Joanne, for being a longtime champ for our neighborhood here at the Riverside Rancho. Thank you, everyone, and have a great night.
Thank you, Monica. And Joanne has left, but maybe she'll be watching from home. And City Manager Galanian, the Repair Cafe, I know was something that I asked for a while ago, and I'm really glad to see that it happened. And sadly, I wasn't able to attend. What's our plan to make this a ongoing feature? Because I think in this case, it was the Pasadena folks, I think, that had been running it, came out to kind of show us how it works. But the idea was that potentially we would take this on and do it on a monthly basis like they do?
Mayor Brockman, I'm not certain if we can manage to do it on a monthly basis. But it's my hope that we can perhaps do it, at least start with quarterly basis. it's my hope that we can perhaps do it, at least start with quarterly basis. I don't have definitive timeline from staff, but we'll follow up. But I believe there were over 130 items that were repaired that day. So, it's for the first, being the first time, I think it's quite impressive, but I'll have to get updates on the frequency.
Okay, okay, let us know. I think it's a great thing. It's great when people can, you know, avoid having to buy something new. So, okay, thank you. So, that concludes announced, community event announcements. And what is next, please?
Next are action items. Action item A, Fire Department Regarding Furno Washington Ambulance Gurney Purchase. One, Resolution to Dispense with Competitive Bidding and Authorize the Deputy Director of Finance Purchasing to Issue Purchase Order Agreements with Furno Washington in the amount of $84,318 over the next three years.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Mr. Mayor, Member of City Council, although self-explanatory, I'm going to give an opportunity for Battalion Chief Tucker to provide some details as to the reason why we are requesting to dispense with competitive bidding.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. This purchase is intended to dispense with the, with a non-biddable clause for our purchase order for this equipment. So, right now we've got all of our frontline ambulances outfitted with Furno gurneys. Those particular gurneys are unique in the fact that they fit into the many small elevators in Glendale and all of our apartment buildings. Works very well for us. We've been using those gurneys for 23 years. What this is intended to do is to allow us to buy a new powered bariatric gurney. Those are for very large patients that exceed 500 pounds. This powered gurney is from Furno, but there's also other companies that make powered bariatric gurneys. So, this non-biddable clause would allow us to continue purchasing our gurneys from the same vendor that we already have an existing PO with. We have, one of our ambulances has been outfitted as this bariatric gurney. This would be mounted inside of this specialized ambulance and respond to these very specific calls. The reason that we want to stay with Furno is that we have a staff member who's trained as a Furno gurney technician. So, all of that annual work and preventive maintenance is handled in-house. We wouldn't have to use another vendor to come in on an annual basis. We could continue to have all the work and the equipment will be able to be maintained right at our fire department. So, if you have any other questions, I'm happy to accept any of those.
Does anyone have any questions?
No. I'll move the item.
Let me, I have a question first. So, it's a, it's a very expensive piece of equipment. It's $84,000 or is that?
So, it's broken down into two areas. So, the, the gurney itself, this powered gurney is $56,000 when you factor in the track that needs to be installed in the ambulance, all the large diameter plates that need to be added to it, batteries and all that stuff. The gurney for what we're talking about is 56,000. The 84,000 is reached with the normal funding that we have through our PO for our annual maintenance, all of our existing fleet of frontline gurneys. So, right now it's about $34,000 is our existing contract with Furno. This would just be adding that $56,000 purchase for that one bariatric gurney.
Okay, and how does that compare to the other manufacturer you mentioned?
There's really one major competitor out there by the name of Stryker and the cost is very competitive. It's right about the same, within just a few thousand dollars.
Okay, that's good to know. And I think this is an expensive piece of equipment, but I also know and maybe people don't, don't, aren't aware of this, that this service that we offer, this, this emergency medical service is something where we bill out to insurance companies and there is cost recovery on that. So, although we do spend quite a bit of money making sure that we have the latest and greatest equipment, which is important, we do have that opportunity to recover those costs through our chargeouts. Is that correct?
100%. So, we charge for every ambulance transport that we, that we have right now and there's a sliding scale based on the type of coverage that the patients have. Depends on the amount of money that we're able to recover. In these particular cases, however, these are specifically for our bariatric patients that exceed 500 pounds. And over the last three years, we had 28 responses that fit that category where I think the, although this is the same recovery as just a, a normal patient that we can bill the insurance for, the potential savings is with this powered piece of equipment that removes a lot of the, the manual lifting that our firefighters have to exert for these types of specialty calls. Some of these patients are in the 1,000 pound range, very difficult to manage and very likely to potentially cause a work comp injury for one of our employees. And this might offset that risk.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted people to understand there's the bigger picture here. There's a lot of good reasons to do this. Okay, so I think we, I'll take a motion again. Was that Councilmember Devine?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Najarian. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadurian, Devine.
Yes.
Katsakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Brotman.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next item, please.
Next item is Action Item B, Community Services and Parks Regarding Emerald Isle Playground Replacement and ADA Improvements Project. One, Motion Approving the Design of the Playground at Emerald Isle Park and Authorizing the Purchasing Administrator or Designee to Execute a Purchase Order with Playcore Wisconsin Inc., DBA Game Time for the Purchase and Installation of Playground Equipment and Required ADA Site Improvements at Emerald Isle Park in the Amount of $786,025 plus a 10% contingency of $78,603 for a total amount not to exceed $864,628. Two, Resolution of Appropriation to Appropriate $489,035 from Citywide Playground Equipment Project to the Emerald Isle Playground Replacement Project to Cover Costs Associated with the Purchase and Installation of Playground Equipment and Associated Site Improvements at Emerald Isle Park.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Mr. Mayor, Member of City Council, just go directly to Mr. Bulanikian, Director of Community Services and Parks, has a short PowerPoint presentation on this item.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Brotman, Members of the Council. Really short presentation on this item. So, Emerald Isle Park is a neighborhood park, little over six acres. We have a number of amenities, restroom building, tennis courts, half-court basketball court, a playground for ages between five and 12 years of age, sand play area, picnic tables and a passive park, passive green space area. The existing playground is over 20 years old. Basically, it's, it's shown its time. We have received a number of requests from the residents in the area to replace, renovate, change out the playground as well as add shade structures. On May 5, 2020, we applied for, or we were awarded $177,000 from the State's Park Prop 68 per capita program as well as $142,000 from the CPRS. That was another grant program that we were awarded. And we worked with Game Time, which is a Playcore company. We have five Game Time Playcore playgrounds in Glendale. Two of them are national demonstration sites and this one that we're proposing as well will be a national demonstration site for Game Time Playcore Company. The proposed play area or playground will add two to five-year-old play area as well as a five to 12-year, five to 12, I'm sorry, two to five-year-olds and five to 12-year-olds. So, we'll have an additional playground for the tiny tots, the preschool-aged children. It'll also include a porton place, ADA accessible safety surfacing, some seat walls, ADA pathway and some site ADA improvements. As I mentioned earlier, all the play elements will be accessible. The playground will include sensory panels and also a tandem swing similar to what we have over at Maple Park with our all-inclusive playground at Maple Park. And the entire playground will be entirely accessible. The estimated cost for the project is $864,000. We currently have $177,000 allocated in grant funds, the Prop 68 that I mentioned, and also about $198,000 in Quimby funds. The purchase installation of site improvements will cost $887,000. The freight and tax, about $40,000 with a net cost for playground and site improvements in the amount of $786,000. So, our per capita grant is $177,000, Quimby funds $198,000, and we're requesting an additional $489,000 through our citywide playground replacement program that we currently fund through our general fund, CIP program totaling $864,000. This project's schedule is tentative. We did go to our Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission in January to get this project approved. We're here today for Council Action Item to Dispense with Competitive Bidding. The reason why we are requesting to dispense of competitive bidding is to meet the grant deadline of December of 2023 for the Prop 68 and then the Game Time deadline is June of 2024. Construction documents and plan check, we hope to get that completed August 2023. We hope that the manufacturing and shipping will take about four to seven weeks, construction four to six weeks, and estimate opening of the playground January 2024. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer. I also have our Deputy Director of Park Planning, Coco Ponosian, as well as our Park Planner, Joe Gonzalez, in the audience.
Thank you. Councilmember Devine?
I know this is not a Shane's Inspiration Park, but you have all-inclusive elements in the park?
Yes, we have some elements that are all-inclusive. Like I mentioned earlier, the swing as well as sensory equipment.
Okay, and this is a general question, but have, has, have you thought about putting more pickleball courts in our, our parks? I noticed that there's a large, I mean, this looks like a pretty big property, six, what is it, six acres? Six, almost six and a half.
Six point three, yeah.
Would, looks like a good place for a pickleball court. I know, I know they're buying up malls and putting them in malls, but, you know, it just seems like we might be looking to do something like that in, in the future in some of our parks.
We can definitely look into that. We have three pickleball courts at Pacific. We're going to add two more on our concrete area at Pacific, so that'll be five. We also have three indoor pickleball courts, Tuesdays and Saturdays at Pacific as well. And then we also have pickleball courts, The Lines at Glen Oaks. And with the Fremont Park renovation, which will come to council, hopefully within the next month or so, we will have pickleball courts at Fremont Park.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Katsakian?
Thank you for this very detailed presentation and I, I'm excited about it. I think the shade structures are going to be great. I love that we're adding shade structures to all our play areas. Given that, and I think maybe some folks watching this, including the first time I, or every time I hear about the cost of what it takes to build a park or renovate a park, you get a little bit of sticker shock. There was an article recently and I was asked about this. It was in LA Times, says LA's East Side in Need of Green Space and will get a new 12-acre park under Sixth Street Viaduct. And it said that this park is going to, cost of it is going to be $20 million. This is around the new bridge that LA built. Can you explain as to how that can possibly cost $20 million for a 12-acre park and here we are spending close to a million dollars for a renovation? Just, we've had this conversation, but I think it warrants for the public to hear it as well.
Great question, Mayor Brotman, Councilmembers. I haven't reviewed that project. I know I glanced through the article. From what I saw, it was more of green space. So, basically some irrigation, walkpath, garden, which isn't as expensive as building structures. For example, our Fremont Park, we're building a brand-new, you know, 2,800 square foot structure, brand-new soccer field. We're moving the tennis courts from one side of the park to another, walkpath, adding additional parking and so on. So, it does add up. I can do more research and see, but from the looks of the pictures, it was more green space and irrigation, more for passive recreation than active recreation.
Okay. And can you explain what a passive park is versus an active park for those who may be unfamiliar?
Passive park or passive recreation is where you have family members or you go out with your friends and hang out in the park, talk, read a book, anything passive, picnic. Active recreation is recreation or facilities that we have, sports courts, let it be pickleball, baseball, sport fields, a community center, swimming, wading pools and so on.
And most of our parks are active parks. They have an active element to them. Thank you.
We have a number of active parks, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Najarian, anything? I wanted to just see if you could help explain something that I brought up in, in the briefings. You know, we talk often about wanting to direct our parks' dollars to our, you know, park poor areas in South Glendale. Yet here we are spending a large amount of money in an area that is, you know, more affluent and has a lot more green space. So, can you explain why this makes sense? You, you went through a little bit of, of kind of where we can use monies and what our options are, but, but I think it would be good, it would be good to explain that because it kind of troubled me when I first saw this.
Yes, Mayor Brotman, Members of the Council. Basically, the funds that we have, these are the only funds we have, or the only pot we have of funds for North Glendale. So, our general fund, CIP Playground Replacement Program is usually used in the north end because the south end has different funding sources such as Measure A, CDBG and DIF. So, we're working with our, you know, grant writer in our park planning section to allocate funds and to apply for funds on the north side. So, we thought that the 177, which is such a small allocation, won't do, you know, or won't put a dent to the actual need in South Glendale. So, the 177, if we combine it with our 493 that we need for, from our CIP Playground Replacement as well as the 142 in kind that we receive from CPRS, would best fit for Emerald Isle Playground.
But we could, we could, all these funds could be used in South Glendale, is that right? They're not restricted to use in North Glendale.
They're not restricted. So, the Prop 40, the Prop, I'm sorry, Prop 68, the 177,000 that we have can be used for South Glendale, but since South Glendale, we have other funds that we can use, we'd rather use the 177 for this playground project.
Okay, so the argument is that we have other sources of funds.
We have other sources of funds.
But do we have, do we have enough to meet our needs is really the, the question?
For, for renovations, yes, we do. For land acquisition, we need a large, like I mentioned this morning in our budget study session, we need a large, large pot of money to purchase.
Right, and we've put aside $4 million for land acquisition, I guess, in total of $4 million?
$4 million, $2 million in DIF and $2 million in Measure S.
But, yeah, it's still a drop in the bucket, right?
Yeah.
I think you also mentioned that this being 20 years old, there, there are safety issues here. We have to get rid of it anyway?
We have, yes, eventually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, could you maybe just make sure that's clear?
Right now the playground is in use and is being used, but before it gets to a point where it'll be a safety concern, we would need to change it. We're being proactive instead of reactive.
Okay, okay.
I'll move the item.
Okay. I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadurian, Devine.
Yes.
Katsakian.
Yes.
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Bronman?
Yes. What is next?
Next is Action Item C, Community Services and Parks Regarding Lease Agreement Between the City of Glendale and Southern California Edison Company for Use of Real Properties for the Purpose of Constructing a Passive Park. One, motion authorizing the city manager or his designee to negotiate and execute a lease agreement between the City of Glendale and Southern California Edison for use of SC-owned real properties with assessors parcel numbers five-six-five-three-dash-zero-zero-one-dash-eight-zero-zero and five-six-one-six-dash-zero-zero-three-dash-eight-hundred for the purpose of developing a passive park.
Thank you. Mr. Galati?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Bulanikian is already in the hot seat and ready and able to present this item as well.
Thank you, Mayor Bronman, members of the council. So tonight, staff is seeking council authorization for the city manager to negotiate an executed lease agreement with Southern California Edison. There's a parcel, there's two parcels in north of Glorieta Park, total size around a little over two acres.
Was there a caller on that?
There was a card on the last.
We can reconsider.
Moved to reconsider.
Second.
Councilmembers Asaturian, Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Bronman?
Yes. That was reconsidered. Now, do you have to read it back into the record?
No.
Okay, now we can ask, and I apologize. Mr. Aron, yes, you can come up, please, and speak to this.
What, the Emerald Isle Park?
Would you like us to pull up the?
But you already passed, I mean, you already passed the thing, right?
No, they voted for reconsideration.
We changed it, we took it back, so now it's fresh.
Now we'll hear your comments.
Okay, good. Yeah, because I was going to second your comments about we need, need of parks in South Glendale, then up there in affluent areas. I mean, they already have backyard, a large backyard that the kids can play there, so because, you ask me some, what I'd like, I live in South Glendale, and what I like about South Glendale, so, actually, this is not, other than the landmark of Armenian church at South Central, and, yeah, I see my neighbors' kids are playing at the parking lots, so I think, I think they need, actually, we need more parks at South Glendale than, I mean, making renovation, those, by the way, you can make a fundraising from those rich people that are living at the Emerald Isle and collect, I mean, raise the funds that way to repair, I mean, what we need, renovation for their parks. Thank you.
Thank you. And it is a good point, it's, you know, we, but I think in this case, we know that we're, we're at the end of life on this thing. I don't know that we've ever done local neighborhood fundraising for parks. It's not a bad idea.
Mayor Bronman, members of the council, we tried for the Shane's Inspiration Playground, and it wasn't successful. Luckily, DIF funds could pay for it because it was a new amenity that we added to the park, so the fundraising would be very, would be challenging.
But it all depends on the neighborhood, right? I think the neighborhood of Maple Park will have a more difficult time than some of the other parts, although I think that, you know, we shouldn't look at these things in these very parochial, this part's getting money, that part's getting money. I think we're doing our best and we're trying to service all the parts of the city. The fact is that land in the south, land anywhere in Glendale costs a lot of money, so we're trying to set aside funds. Hopefully, we put together enough to purchase a park, and we'll keep looking for opportunities. And I can assure the public that anytime we look at, even with the Pioneer project about the woman who called earlier, when we were looking at that project and we were having discussions, we were trying to have a park component to it that would connect it with the tunnel to the Fremont Park. So we're trying our best.
Okay.
I'll move the item.
Okay, thank you. Second, and roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asaturian, Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Bronman?
Yes. Okay. Yes, next item, please. Well, we already read it into, do we need to read it again? Are we okay?
We're fine.
We already read it into the record, okay. And we've already gone to Mr. Bulanikian to start his presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Bronman, members of the council. So the two-point-three acres is located north of Glorieta Park, and in talking with Southern California Edison, the annual lease for those two parcels will be a little under twelve-hundred dollars a year with annual five percent increase. And the conceptual design that, on the next slide, the conceptual design is tentatively approved by Southern California Edison. When we reached out to them, they had mentioned that they want a passive park, and as I mentioned in my earlier presentation, passive park is where someone can go and hang out and, you know, read a book, sit on a bench and so on, nothing active. So a new passive park would be, have an area for group meetings, plant new trees and shrubs, have interpretive areas, maybe a demonstration garden and so on. Based on the conceptual plan that we've attached, we're thinking that the project would cost between one-point-five to one-point-seven million, and with a lease agreement in place, the city would be eligible to apply for additional grant funds and other funding to develop a park project. With that being said, we do have Measure A Annual Allocation Program. Our current Measure A balance for the north side of the park is one hundred and forty-three thousand. The total anticipated allocation for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is four hundred and twenty-five thousand. If council decides to enter into a lease agreement, we can work with Southern California Edison, have a few community meetings to design our park, and if council approves the park and different funding sources, then we'll move forward with the project. If not, we can always terminate our lease with Southern California Edison. With that being said, we can also apply for other grant programs such as Prop 68, our state park program, as well as grant funding from Santa Monica Conservancy and a number of climate resiliency grants that are available from the California Natural Resource Agency. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Okay, questions? I have some, nobody else has. Well, I'll say, or comments, questions. But there are two things that can, I mean, doing the lease agreement, I think we should do the lease agreement, you know, let's get that before it's, before we can't get it anymore. So it's all a matter of what do we do with it? I asked you in the briefing whether there's recycled water there, and the answer was no, there's no recycled water. So it does concern me that we would consider turf, meaning grass, that would need to be irrigated with potable water. That's not the only reason I would say we should do something different, but I think that's another argument why we should maybe consider native landscaping, make it more of a, kind of, a nature environment, go as light as possible with whatever amenities we would put in. I mean, maybe no amenities except a walking path, perhaps that could just be DG, but I think it would be great, and if we could get some, maybe some groundwater retention stuff going on there, I don't know what's possible, but I would kind of be interested in seeing us go into that direction. I know there were some community members that wrote to us along those lines. I would think that, you know, going for something that's a native garden, maybe we could work with Theodore Payne and do something like that. So that's that. The other concern I have is users crossing Canyatta because we're on two sides of a very fast-moving arterial, and I would like us to look into how that's going to work if people are going to be on one side and want to cross. We're going to need to do something, and just a straight-up crosswalk, I think, is too dangerous there. So I would like us to consider that. And then the last thing is, I know anytime we look at something like this, we should probably reach out to our friends at the Arroyo and Foothills Conservancy because they're always looking at opportunities to connect areas for wildlife crossings. I don't know if this is, if it's into their maps at all, but let's, let's reach out and see whether this, this is something that might, you know, patch together the kind of network they're trying to create for wildlife. Those would be my comments.
Well, okay, well, I'm all for maintaining the lease agreement as well, but I do have reservations about spending this money for a passive park, again, in the north. Now, this is based on Measure A funding, correct?
The lease, the eleven, the twelve-hundred dollars a year, Councilmember Devine, will be absorbed by our general fund, our Parks Services General Fund.
Okay.
If we, once when we develop a plan, we will come back to council and decide what funding we should use. I'm just letting council know that Measure A north side funds can be used for this project. If we decide to use it, then we would need to follow the LA County Measure A guidelines in terms of outreach and outreach and planning and so on.
But, but this, this north, this north side funding can be used in the south, it's not just restricted.
Yes.
So if, if we have this funding available and we add it to our pot for South Glendale, then we'll have more, and we could possibly do a parklet or something in the south if there's space available. I know the thing about this is the land is there, you know, we don't, you know, one-thousand dollars a month or something is, is very little to pay for a lease, or one thousand a year, is it a year or a month?
Year.
A year. So I think we should, you know, continue that, but the property, the land is there, and that's what makes it so enticing to put a, put a park, but I would rather see these funds used elsewhere, especially in the south.
And maybe we can combine those by, by doing something that's low-cost, native, and low-impact, and not spend as much money. Councilmember Kasakian?
Thank you. And looking at this, it seems like an unlikely spot for a park initially, right? But if you take an area, look at the area, if you take a look at the area, you see that it would be a continuation of Glorieta Park. I don't know if that, actually, that photo, maybe it kind of does it some justice. You see that little path extending down, the yellow little string that leads into Glorieta Park. And I do share the concern about crossing Canyatta, but absent that, if that can be addressed in a way, in a safe way, I think that it would be a nice passive park. I agree that the focus should be on native flora and fauna. That area, because of the Oakmont Country Club, because of the stormwater basin up, a little further up, that when we have strong storms, turns into like a little mini pond or lake for a few weeks, along with where it's nestled between the hills, sees a lot of wildlife. Anyone who drives up that way, you can see deer, you can see coyote. I would like to see the park also incorporate some informational markers about the local wildlife, what kind of birds there are in that area. You can see everything from woodpeckers to local varieties of blue jays, so I think it could be a nice little quiet part of Glorieta, so I will support this.
Now, if we move this item now, does that, that does not lock us into this particular design, right?
No, Councilmember, Mayor Bronman, not at all. We'll work with Southern California Edison. After we execute the lease, we'll start our community meetings, we'll work with Southern California Edison on changing the conceptual, send it over to them for approval, and once when they approve, then we'll look at grants and secure funding through, let it be Prop 68, climate resiliency and so on.
Okay, and for anybody here that's watching or, that's here or anybody watching from home, I think what you did explain to me in the briefing and probably to the rest of us is that under the transmission lines that SC owns, we're very limited in what we could do there, because they don't, obviously, they need to get their trucks in, they don't want to have anything that's going to interfere with the transmission line, so, just so everybody knows that what we design is going to have to take that into consideration.
Yeah, we would need to fence that area off and make sure they have access and access for their trucks to get into the area and leave, so that we will incorporate that in the design.
Okay, okay, so do I have a motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion.
The second?
But are we separating the lease from the park by any chance?
Well...
Can we do that?
Yeah, this is, this is just for executing the lease.
Okay.
The design is in finalized.
Okay, I'll move it.
Okay, or you'll second it?
Oh, second.
It was moved by Councilmember Kasakian.
Sorry, sorry, Councilmember.
Seconded by Councilmember Devine, and roll call, please.
Councilmembers?
Were there any comments?
Any cards?
Any cards? No, thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asaturian, Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Bronman?
Yes. Okay, next item, please.
Next item, Action Item D, Public Works Regarding City of Glendale Zero-Emission Bus Rollout Plan. One, resolution approving the Glendale Zero-Emission Bus Rollout Plan that provides the roadmap to transition the Glendale Beeline fleet to a zero-emission battery-electric bus fleet.
Thank you, Mr. Galati.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, going to ask Martha DiAndrea, our transit manager, has a very short, brief presentation in regards to this rollout plan.
Good morning, good evening, Mayor Bronman, council members. To reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the state of California, the California Air Resources Board, CARB, adopted the Innovative Clean Transit ICT Rule in December of two thousand and eighteen. The rule requires all public transit agencies must transition to one hundred percent zero-emission bus fleet by two thousand and forty. The ICT rule established transition milestones for all public transit agencies. All transit agencies must submit a zero-emission bus rollout plan approved by their board by June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Sorry about that. As the timeline shows, transit agencies must begin to purchase zero-emission buses in two thousand and twenty-six, and all bus purchases must be zero-emission by two thousand and twenty-nine, with the full transition completed by two thousand and forty. To facilitate the transition, the ICT rule requires both large, over a hundred buses and small, under a hundred buses, transit agencies to prepare a zero-emission bus rollout plan that is a roadmap to guide Glendale's transition to a zero-emission bus fleet. CARB considers the rollout plan to be a living document to be updated and changed throughout the transition. The rollout plan contains the following sections: the zero-emission bus technology to be adopted, the fleet replacement plan, infrastructure needs, workforce training plan, and potential funding sources. The bus rollout plan is based on findings of the Arroyo Verdugo Transit Operator's Electrification Feasibility Study conducted by Calstart and presented to the city council on December seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. The study provided power usage analysis per beeline transit route, utility and charging analysis, infrastructure assessment, and recommended the adoption of battery-electric buses over hydrogen due to the operational maintenance costs, power consumption, physical footprint of the utility improvements, and charging infrastructure of battery-electric buses onsite at the space-constrained transit maintenance facility, being more cost and space-efficient than adopting the hydrogen fuel cell technologies. The study also found that the environmental disadvantaged communities in the south of Glendale would benefit the most from the transition to zero-emission buses. The city of Glendale will only purchase battery-electric buses from this point forward. This will allow Glendale to have one hundred percent zero-emission fleet by two thousand and thirty-five. Looking at other transit agencies' rollout plans in Southern California, the anticipated transition to a full zero-emission fleet ranges from two thousand and twenty-five for a small agency all the way to two thousand and forty. The recommendation is for the city council to adopt the Glendale Zero-Emission Bus Rollout Plan that provides a road- Plan that provides a roadmap to transition the city's bus fleet to a battery electric zero emission bus fleet to comply with the ICT rule. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Any questions from my colleagues? No? Okay, I would just like to say this is, this is great news. I like that line that going forward, we will only be purchasing battery electric vehicles. That's fantastic. I guess the only way we could accelerate faster than 2035 would be, would be if we started to retire some of our fleet early, and that's not our plan at the moment.
No, and several of these buses were funded with federal funds and there's a useful life of 12 years, so we can't retire them earlier than the useful life requirement.
I see. But we're still, we still think we're on track for 2035, and I think you said, you said Los Angeles originally said that they were going to do by 2030, but it's slipping now to 2035 as well? Is that, is that right?
Yeah, I, I just heard today that even though, yeah, LA Metro is 2030, it was 2020, I think it's actually 2035 now, I think. LA is not going to make the 2028. Again, these are aspirational, these are living documents, so as, as they implement and try to deploy these electric buses or hydrogen buses, you know, it's, it's, it's a challenge.
So LA Metro is on track for 2030? Is that, Councilmember Najarian, is that looking good?
You know, LA Metro was very excited and very aggressive in their plans. I have to say that, that aggressiveness has sort of backed off at this point, mainly because of the, the issues that they're predicting with infrastructure, charging infrastructure, and, and electrical supply as well for, for some of that. So, yeah, they were going to be 2030? In 2018, I think they set the, their sights at 2030. It's not going to happen at 2030, though, and as, as Martha said, maybe 2035, but, so it's not the buses, it's everything else that's, you know, well, you know, as we've dealt with supply, electrical supply and electrical infrastructure issues, that they share the same issues that we have.
Oh, Councilmember Devine.
Yeah, well, I, I think that goes with the infrastructure that we're going to need, and if you go through the list, that there's a parking deck involved, transformers, hiring contractors, power intensive, and, you know, and there's no funding available right now to, to do that, so it's going to take time and it's going to take money. So hopefully, we can get it done by 2035.
Okay.
We do have some, some grant funding already, so we can get started and, and we have funding for the parking deck and for the first batch of electric buses.
Right, that was the other encouraging thing that I saw in the report. It said that we're estimating something like 47, 48 million dollars on a net present value basis for this conversion. I think that does not necessarily include the GWP costs of the electrical upgrades, but still, against that 30, I'm sorry, 47 or 48, we have 40 million already locked down in, in grant funds. So we're well on our way to covering the cost of this transition, and that's fantastic news.
Make it happen.
So we have, I think, two speakers and a caller, so we'll start with Mike Borisov.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Mike Borisov. I'm one of the ex-official sustainability commissioners on the Sustainability Commission. My, when my tenure began about 10 months ago, it was like one of the first things I asked Mr. Jones, I was like, when are we going to have an electric bus fleet? He's like, Public Works is working on it, and the beeline is getting grants from the state, and I know you got a lump sum grant of 32 million dollars, which is amazing, so you should pass this project, please. I use the bus pretty much exclusively, and I see that, once we rolled out our LA Metro Go Pass cards, a lot of more students are using it now. And if we electrify our bus fleet, I think that also comes with increased bus shelters and wifi, I believe, and like real-time signage, so it's just great stuff. We'll be ahead of the curve, and hopefully, we'll be LA Metro. Right? Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And Theo Cisot, did I pronounce that right?
You were close.
Close, okay.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman and the city council. My name is Theo. I grew up in Glendale and, and I'm an alumni of Hoover High School. I even served as a student ambassador for City Hall back, way back when, so it's nice to be back here today. And although I attend college away from here, away from home, I see how the city changes every time I come back home, and each time I come home, I think about how the city can improve. And council today, accessibility to public transportation sticks out to me in particular as I visit home. I want to keep this brief, but I want to share my experience with public transportation here in Glendale. I come from a low-income background, and so in high school, my family couldn't afford a car, so I was well acquainted with public transportation here. So I took the bus everywhere. I would take the Metro's 180 to school, I took the Beeline's 5 to the park to play basketball, and I took the 1 to my part-time job, the Galleria. But the beeline system often failed me. Delays and lack of service that lasted only until the early evening meant that I was limited in terms of what I can do throughout the day, throughout the week. For example, when I was a student ambassador here for City Hall, I had to take an Uber oftentimes here to, to the building, because it took 30 minutes to take the bus from my home near Columbus Elementary School compared to the seven-minute drive, which was a huge disparity for me. And I am aware that service has improved and is improving, obviously, but public transportation in Glendale has a really long way to go. Another example, which relates to the discussion on disparities between north and south Glendale, just last week, I wanted to go on a hike at Brand Park on a Friday afternoon, and I didn't have my car. So when I opened my maps, I was disappointed when I saw it would take 43 minutes to take the bus to Brand Park from south Glendale compared to a 15-minute drive. And so this lack of access to a public space like Brand Park, which all residents should be able to enjoy, and which has amenities that a lot of the other city doesn't have to offer, hikes, you know, that, I think there's like a garden or something there. This lack of access disproportionately harms low-income residents who don't live in the wealthy north Glendale neighborhoods. And so as we look to modernizing our public transportation here, I urge us all to think about how people who don't have access to a car might be impacted by these decisions, who don't have the resources to access the public spaces that our tax dollars pay for. For many of us in Glendale, public transportation is our only way of getting around, and the decisions we make here today about how we choose to structure our public transportation will affect million, well, not millions, sorry, will affect thousands of people and their access to parks, recreation centers, and schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. And where are you going to school?
I go to Claremont McKenna College.
You go to Claremont McKenna? Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you for coming to speak, appreciate it.
Good seeing you.
Good seeing you.
And we have a caller?
We have a caller, Tom O'Shaughnessy. Tom, you're on air, you have three minutes.
I can say it in under three minutes. Mayor, city council staff, I'm delighted to hear about this. I am curious about the infrastructure. I'm glad you mentioned it. I would hope that every possible bit of space, anywhere in that parking lot, train station, bus station, will have solar panels across the top of it. Right then and there, you're doing a great deal about your, your target of how much you're going to have in the city of Glendale. Two, I would hope that there's a way to adjust so that if you're putting in the power connections for the, for the new zero emission buses, that you are dealing with the fact that you will then be closing down the gas pump station, or will you be keeping that open because of refuse trucks and other city vehicles? And just a comment to the young man who just spoke, I'm in a wheelchair, I've been in a wheelchair over five years. Forty-three minutes is not a long time. You can bring a book, consider public transportation as a Zen experience, I do. We're not an instant 15 minutes. When I had a car, of course, I did. And I think our transportation, whether it's the beeline, the metro, the train, all of it tying in together is excellent. It can always get better, we can get something that links from North Hollywood through Burbank, Glendale to Pasadena because of the difficulty of the subway lines, but I think we're doing excellent work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Martha, could you just maybe respond to a point he made about the existing gas tanks? I think he had a question.
So as we transition, not only beeline buses operate on CNG right now, but also a, a, a large portion of our municipal fleet is CNG-powered, and so it's going to be some years, at least to 2035 at least, for, for the beeline buses. We'll still need, we will still have some CNG buses, so as of right now, that CNG station will, will remain until we, we no longer need it.
Okay, all right, thank you. So we have no more callers? All right, so can I?
I'll move the item.
Okay, motion from Councilmember Devine, second, Councilmember Kusakian. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadurian, Devine.
Yes.
Kusakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Brotman.
Yes, thank you. So that concludes our action items. What is next?
Next are reports and information, a fire department presentation of community emergency preparedness.
Okay, the report we've all been waiting for with all the, the green shirts in the back. Mr. Galanian?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, our recently appointed emergency manager, Tommy Nicola, is going to share this presentation with you on community outreach for emergency preparedness. And as you know, this isn't for information only, you may ask questions, but please refrain from providing direction.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman, city council members and staff. My name is Tom Nicola, and I'm a captain with the Glendale Fire Department. I have the honor of serving as the emergency manager for the city of Glendale. Thank you for the time and the opportunity to provide an overview of the community, community emergency preparedness programs that your Glendale Fire Department engages in throughout the year. Last year, the Glendale Fire Department responded to over 22,000 emergency calls. While helping citizens in their most significant time of need is an honor we cherish. The opportunity to talk to people everywhere in this beautiful city where meaningful connection happens. Whether it's teaching under EZEPs at our upcoming annual sidewalk CPR event on June, June 1st at the Glendale Galleria and GCC, or providing AED training and access to the public and employees in libraries and department buildings throughout the city, the GFD is more than capable of responding to just 911 calls. That's why every year, the men and women of the Glendale Fire Department prioritize getting the message of emergency preparedness into our schools, parks, playgrounds, libraries, and the places we call home. The Glendale CERT, or Community Emergency Response Team, is a group of highly motivated and dedicated volunteers. I've recently had the privilege to teach and witness their passion for service. With over 160 volunteers representing organizations like HOAs, high school students and individuals like Mayor Brotman, their calling is as simple as ours at the GFD: help citizens in need. Volunteers register for a 24-hour course that begins online and then supported with hands-on training that gives them a basic framework of skills and information that empowers them to go out and make a difference. Volunteers are given a class on topics ranging from disaster preparedness and disaster psychology, first aid, light search and rescue, and how they can help themselves and assist the Glendale Fire Department and the city when a disaster strikes. In an emergency, first responders are deployed to assist wherever the greatest need is determined, and often people in areas less impacted find themselves needing to be self-sufficient longer. The CERT programs makes these volunteers better prepared, trained, and capable of making a difference in a disaster. Currently, through grants secured by the Office of Emergency Services and Management, we have three storage pods strategically located in vulnerable communities that can help provide some of the necessary tools for CERT volunteers to help us until resources can arrive. The Office of Emergency Management has assembled a pivotal team of leaders looking at ways to engage, grow, and foster a sense of belonging that comes from knowing we are all better together. I am honored to have with me tonight the supporter of our most recent graduates from last month's CERT class and our CERT leadership team, made up of Stephen Meek, Rich Bachia, Sarah Emery-Bunn, Mary Mendelson, and Jerry Minar. Together, they have volunteered their time, skills, and money, teaching classes, attending meetings, and GFD training exercises, and showing up to represent CERT in community events. On behalf of the Glendale Fire Department, I sincerely thank them for the sacrifice and noble endeavor, as we could not accomplish this alone. This program faces challenges in today's environment, where people's time and finances are scarce resources. The Glendale Fire Department, along with our CERT leadership team and volunteers, are currently looking at ways we can grow its members and provide the needed training and tools. For over 50 years, the Glendale Fire Department's Junior Fire Program and Annual Picnic has reached out to kids and our schools, local schools, challenging them to be creative and brave while learning about fire safety. Together with teachers and staff from the Glendale Unified School District's 21 schools, elementary schools, and over 4,000 students are introduced to the importance of fire safety. Children in most second graders, grades, and all fifth grade classes are given a presentation and encouraged to share this with their families at home. They know now that being prepared with a plan when an emergency happens makes a difference. The fifth graders complete a workbook, exam, and submit essays with the best scores, efforts, and papers chosen to be represented at the annual junior fire picnic. Sponsored by donations from our community, community partners and the GFFA, we invite over 200 kids to our barbecue lunch, complete with games, prizes, awards, and usually a soaked backseat for the loved ones taking them home. Annually, the GFD makes its way into the schools and classrooms to read books, attend games, and speak to kids and young adults at the high school level on the steps they can take to becoming a firefighter. Whether it's throwing out the first pitch in a Little League game or inspiring our youth to be the next generation of firefighters, it reminds us that laughter is still the best medicine. This year's Fire Service Day was a fantastic turnout, which most of you, most of you experienced yourself. We opened our home and invited people in to sit down with one another and enjoy a complimentary breakfast to showcase what the Glendale Fire Department is all about: courtesy and service. This year marked the first time since 2019 that we could partner with our friends in the Glendale Police Department and offer some space to community service organizations to show all the amazing skills, tools, training, and most importantly, the people that make this city so great. Together, we served well over 1,000 people while giving everyone a front row seat to an exciting auto extrication demonstration of what we can do whenever and wherever they call for help. We listened to our kids and the families, asked questions, and made sure they left our house with the answers they needed and the confidence that we are here to serve them with exceptional customer service in all we do. We know how much trust this community places in our profession, and it's rewarding to create moments where people get to experience where we live and work in the stations throughout this city. Hopefully, this presentation has provided a picture of how the GFD continues to engage our citizens to be better prepared and see our pride in making this one of the safest and best cities to work, live, and play in Southern California. Thank you for your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, I, I think I'd like to meet our guests, if they could introduce themselves, that'd be great.
Okay, let's do that, that sounds good.
Yeah, this, tonight, this evening, I invited our most recent graduates to our EOC, just to kind of give them a, an overview and a tour of our EOC that most people don't get to see. I have with me tonight on our leadership team, I have Rich Bachia, Sarah Emery-Bunn, I have Stephen Meek, who's also sits on our, our Parks and Rec Council, and Jerry Minar and Mary Mendelson. They all participated and helped do this last class. Also have participants from this most recent class, and so I really thank them for showing their support. It is a program that, as you know, it requires a lot of volunteerism, as we can't do it alone, but we're looking at new and different ways we can get some of our youth involved. So, thank you.
And, and are you working with our local Boy Scouts and Girl Scout troops?
We have not yet worked with them, at least I personally have not. I know I'm, I'm new to this position, but that is one avenue of approach. We have a, do have a program that I've recently heard about called Teen CERT. This program is 16 and over. I'd like to learn more about it and be able to present some more information to you later time, but yes.
Sure, I, I, I think it's a natural fit. I think that, you know, there's a lot of, you know, similarities in, in always being prepared as a Boy Scout and, and always being prepared to answer the call for an emergency as a firefighter. So I think that if you can reach out to the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, I know at least one of the troops meets next to the fire station up by Verdugo Park.
Yes.
By the ball field, so.
Yeah.
by Verdugo Park, by the ball field. So, talk to some of them.
Currently, the program's at 16 and over, so that's kind of been the thing in the past. But we, I look forward to reaching out to them and seeing.
I never was a Scout, so I don't know what the Eagle Scout age is, but I know that some of them go well into high school and call. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Keep up the great work.
Appreciate it.
Councilmember Najarian.
Great program, and I'm most familiar with, is it Isabel?
Meyer.
Isabel Meyer, who is Glen Oaks Canyon's CERT leader.
Yes, Ms. Meyer has been great. I've worked with her. We put one of the pods in community.
Oh, please come to.
So I have the privilege of speaking on several occasions with Ms. Meyer, helped her. She's very, very well organized, and she's very passionate, and I love it. She has a storage unit that we helped move some of that stuff into this, one of these CERT pods that's there at Glen Oaks Park off of Arcade, and went back to it just this past week and couldn't walk in. So it's very full with some of our stuff, but mainly a cache of supplies that she and her HOA and community have pooled together.
So what we should try to do, I think, maybe you're trying to do that, is train several members in each neighborhood, so we've got full coverage. I don't know if anyone on my street is CERT, my neighborhood, I guess, is CERT certified, unless Mayor Brotman is. I don't know. Did you take the class?
I am. Our own Mayor Brotman is a CERT member.
But don't count on me to get up your hill.
If I'm in trouble, you're too far up. And I think that would be a really, and so I don't know if you keep track geographically or have communication system that you can send out in case of catastrophe or whatever, but certainly I think that would be a good next step to organize your team throughout the city. So, but it's great that the volunteers have shown their commitment to the city, and let's hope we never have to use them, but it's great to have them available.
It is, and it's been helping with training. We've had a few show up for some department USAR training that we had recently in Whiting Woods. That's where our other location is at the end of the road at Whiting Woods. And we have one in Palmer Park, which our president on our leadership team has been really helping to get that together in Palmer Park. So, yeah, we're looking forward to other ways we can engage members in the community and get more CERT leadership and CERT members in general. But you make a good point about the geographical locations of those people.
Like our fire stations. We place them strategically, so.
For sure.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Councilmember Devine.
Yes. Well, you know, you could collaborate with Neighborhood Watch, you know, go to their meetings and, because that's exactly what Councilmember Najarian's talking about, just each neighborhood has, you know, has a Neighborhood Watch, and that would be a good place. I also wanted to mention a program for our teens, because I think you said, what's the age of the CERT?
So this one is 16 years and older.
And older.
For regular CERT. I've heard of Teen CERT, so I'm not able to speak on it just yet about the age limit and the type of training that it does, but I can get some information and get back to you on that.
Well, that sounds like a great program. I think that's something that you should investigate and get involved with, get more outreach to our schools so we get more young people involved in this program. Thank you all for doing this program. I'm really proud that you've put in your time and your efforts, and I know it wasn't the easiest, but we appreciate it. And I don't know that there's anyone in my neighborhood, but I'm hoping. I also wanted to comment on the Service Day. It was fantastic. I think it was one of the best we've had. Lot of people there, but was community oriented, and as you said, with all of the different hospitals there and service groups, it was terrific. And I know the kids had a great time. You had more activities for the kids. It was just great. So thank you for doing that as well. And thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you. It was our pleasure.
Thanks. Councilmember Kasakian has another comment?
Yes, and I know that at one point, we had the Gears folks, who were our ham radio volunteers. And I know that they haven't been working with the Fire Department and the EOC in the last few years. I know COVID was probably one of the things that contributed to the relationship not being maintained as it once was. But I would think that some of these folks would be ready participants and maybe roll their talents and skills into helping out with CERT. Have you considered reaching out to the Gears folks?
Definitely, and I have met a few of those individuals that, one in particular that is CERT trained. So, but yes, moving forward with some of the EOC improvements and training would be to reach out to those groups and try to make some contact on how we can better utilize them in the future moving forward and possibly introduce them to CERT.
I've run into them at a number of city events, various individuals, and they're all eager and ready to help. They're just itching at chumps, you know, they want to get back at it. So please reach out to them along with, if I think of any other groups, I'll try to reach out to you and let you know.
Thank you.
And I'll also thank you and thank all the folks here that are on the CERT leadership team and all the people, a lot of you. I think I went, I did the CERT program with a bunch of you. I recognize Sarah and, anyway, a bunch of you. I know Stephen was in it and Jerry.
Yes.
Jerry. And I forget your name in the back.
Mario.
Mario. You were, I think we were in the same class. No?
No, we met at another event.
Okay, we met at another event. But anyway, a bunch of us. And that was, I think, the first class after CERT was brought back, because we had it for a while. It kind of died off, and then Captain Payne was helpful in bringing that back to life. And as I've always said, you're probably sick of hearing this, but it's really the same thing Councilmember Najarian said. I think it's great to train people and have them go off, and they've got these skills, but the skills atrophy pretty fast. The gold standard is really keeping community groups active through drills and through communications. And there are a couple tools. One of them is, you know, it reminds me of what Isabel Meyer did, where she did it all manually. She went around with some people, did, you know, surveys so that they kind of knew in the neighborhood who was who, who's got a pet, who's disabled, who's a doctor, who's a this, who's a that, right? So they kind of know what their resources are, and they can activate that. Her whole system was very much, you know, homegrown on pieces of paper.
Right.
And she showed me, she had a stack of paper, and I was thinking, well, that, you know, if there's a fire, that may not be the greatest thing. But, yeah, I went to a meeting, and I think some of you were at that meeting where some folks introduced this tool called Map Your Neighborhood, which sounds, you know, it looked really great. It may be better if it were like an app. This was kind of paper again, but the idea is, you know, you get these small clusters in a neighborhood to kind of, you know, map who's who in the neighborhood. And some of the benefits of that go beyond simply emergency response. It's also kind of about building community in neighborhoods, right?
Certainly.
And, you know, the more of that we had had, you know, can you imagine what it would have been like in the early days of COVID if we had kind of more of those networks established? We could have really helped each other a lot more with food and, you know, who knows what things that people need help with. So I really think what we should, and this is not direction, this is just, you know, my wish list, but I really would like us to kind of reach out to specific neighborhoods, especially the more vulnerable neighborhoods, and really encourage people to create teams, not just get trained individually, but create teams that then they can kind of keep alive. I know Mr. Meek is doing that in Adams Hill, which is one of probably our more vulnerable areas because of the narrow streets and everything. And so that's great, but I think it would be great to see more of that and to see if we can use Map Your Neighborhood. And also, there's this program called Firewise, which I think we should make sure people know about, because that's a program that can help, I think, either reduce your fire insurance or maybe help you keep your insurance if it's being pulled. So there are a couple of resources there that we should really pull together, in my opinion.
Yes, sir. And matter of fact, Whiting Woods just recently became a Firewise community, which, in fact, as you spoke, helped keep their insurance rates down. And actually, there was only one insurance company that would give them a quote. So you're right, there'll be some more information about that. And as you and I had spoken before about Map Your Neighborhood, looking at maybe a platform that would be easy, like an app or something to download and track those types of resources in your community that way. But all great ideas.
Yeah, let us know what you need, what resources you need, because I think this is probably, you know, a low-cost way of building community, creating a more resilient environment for everyone, and preparing ourselves for, you know, the difficulties that we're going to be facing from time to time. Heat storms, earthquakes, of course, have always been there, but now we're facing new threats, so.
We'll be sure to put it on the budget, sir.
Okay. Please, please do.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
We do have a comment, or a speaker, Mr. Meek? Think you have something you want to share with us?
This should only take about 10 or 12 hours, because you guys are used to that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council staff. I originally was coming up here to ask for more support, but it seems like it's already there, and I appreciate that greatly. The people who have trained this, and as you said, my neighborhood, I've got six people now that are working as a team to, and we're going to be using Map Your Neighborhood over the course of the years. But, you know, just the search and rescue, the minor first aid we get really does help in an emergency. I've been talking to other people. I've been in touch with the Montrose shopping people that own the stores up there, and mentioned this to them. They're interested in talking to me about getting more CERT training for their owners, because what happens if the earthquake would happen while the stores are all open? Or on a weekend, when there's a harvest festival or something like that? So they're always into that, too. I was very grateful for the pods that the Fire Department has, the three that are out there now. I'm hoping to get more in other neighborhoods. I'm also intending to try to get a wildfire evaluator class going here in conjunction with CERT. This would be something where if I'm an evaluator, I could go to people's homes outside and say, hey, this is something you might want to think about moving that wood that's stacked against your house away from the house so that the ambers wouldn't start a fire, that sort of thing. It would just be like a free service for the neighborhood. All I'd need to do is call and ask for somebody to come over. And if the city could add the CERT classes to your webpage, that would be great, too, just to help us promote and get this going citywide. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meek. Okay, so that was a report. We don't have any action. Okay, what is next?
Next is oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. And we have.
Okay. I have one.
One there, I think.
Okay, one more. So let's start with Malcolm Johnson, our trusty photographer. Thank you.
He's more than that.
He's more than that.
In the 1540s, Spanish settlers' arrival would come Glendale, and they found there were people already living there, and they were the Gabriela Tavanga Indians. Now, on September 21st, 2003, this city dedicated a memorial at the Tavanga Peak about three and a half miles from here, and it brought together Native American dancers, local residents, and the city, state, and federal officials to celebrate the area's indigenous population. And of course, its roots in its wilderness. "It is an honor, on behalf of our tribe and in memory of our ancestors, that we have not been forgotten," said Anthony Morales, otherwise known as Chief Red Blood of the tribal chairman and chief of the Gabriela Tavanga San Gabriel Band Mission Indians. Okay. Now, in the Glendale news press where I'm getting most of this information from, it is said that the Tavanga were indentured. They were not. They were enslaved. They were forced to build the San Gabriel Mission and the San Fernando Mission. Now, of course, let me say it again, they were enslaved. This is something that unfortunately my ancestors are very familiar with. So this council, this city, dedicate $2,000 to build a memorial on top of Tavanga Peak. Okay, so I'm sorry, but I don't think remembering this, especially as Armenians are about to lose some of their land, their central land in Artsak, it's not a political statement to remind people that we have history here, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Alan Dish.
Good evening, council members. I would like to begin shortly. I just need to get my notes ready. I would like to clarify some comments I've made, and of course, respond to your critics. By your, I mean as a collective. Last week especially, there was a caller. I will be responding to that criticism. Mr. Brotman, yes, welcome back from DC. Also, my condolences, Mr. Najarian belated nonetheless, for your father's passing. Mr. Brotman, okay, you were recently accused, rather, for being not a true ecologist, trying to, at worst, I don't know, impose some kind of undemocratic rules, regulations, curtail our freedoms, all of that. I would like to respond to it by going through a detour, if that's okay. Permit me to prehistory, namely to Göbekli Tepe, which is a historical site in southern Turkey, and Mr. Kasakian. We were at a lecture about it. I made some mistakes when I talked about it, so I'd like to clarify that as well. Why is this place so important? First, of course, the Armenians, it's at least assumed that there were proto-Armenians in this area 10,000 years ago in the northern area of the Fertile Crescent. So it is alleged to be some kind of a religious site for the earliest settled humans who were transferring from basically hunter-gatherer to like sedentary agricultural. But there's a mystery, because first scientists are not so sure why this place was built. There's like a Stonehenge-like structure with a bunch of animal figurines carved on them. The mystery is double, because they also don't know why it was abandoned. They buried it on purpose, and I'd like to speculate on this. People were saying, oh, because it's an earthquake region, maybe. I will answer it the same way. The monument, I think, was built and then buried as a warning about civilization itself. What struck my curiosity very briefly is first, how this place resembles the biblical Eden, at least how this transition, rather, sorry, the story of Eden resembles how we moved from hunter-gatherer to settled, and all the consequences, incidentally. Of course, civilization got us things like more people, food, surpluses, culture, but we also got wars, more inequality between genders, and all those problems. Even our diet suffered because we were eating more plants, our teeth even, basically. It was a bad story. So you can imagine people are skeptical of the Neolithic Revolution. That's what it was called. Now, I want to speculate here. Maybe you can see where I'm going with this. It is in this spirit that I think these inhabitants at Göbekli Tepe knew all of this in advance. They knew civilization, like, it might be a good idea, but there's also a bunch of these problems, you know, like, and I'm ready to accept that Armenians were responsible for the origin of civilization. If we also accept the maybe cynical opposite conclusion, that it's also up to us, Armenians, to somehow stop the excesses of civilization. By that, I mean things like ecological damage, wars, from Holocaust to Gulag to Armenian genocide. Let's not forget that the young Turks were not simply religious fundamentalists. No, they were military modernizers and social engineers, simply trying to create a Turkish nation-state. My conclusion here would be that, yes, I'm ready to support you, Mr. Brotman, if it means that you want to stop certain excesses of civilization. At the same time, we should bear in mind that ecology more and more has an ideological function in our days. Like, because we live in secular times, it's as if we need some kind of a new authority unquestionable, which can then impose limits. unquestionable, which can then impose limits. We should bear this also in mind, and yes, if it is true, then again, we are ready to accept being on this road to, let's call it, stopping civilization, or at least the excesses of it. Thank you for your time. I'm sorry if I was long.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Do we have any other callers?
We have a caller. We have a caller.
We have a caller. Okay.
Our one caller is Carol Bruscha. Carol, I apologize if I mispronounced your name, but you're on air, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
Yes, I am confused about the purposes, about the purpose of Neighborhood Services. Today, I called to report a problem with a city tree overhanging onto the sidewalk. It needs to be trimmed. The woman I talked to said I had to call Public Works. Neighborhood Services has nothing to do with this. It has always been my idea that Neighborhood Services is the place to report neighborhood problems, and this department would then notify the appropriate department. Am I wrong? Because I don't feel people have to call other departments when they do call Neighborhood Services. So that's all I want to say, and I want to thank you for letting me vent, because I was a little upset over having to call Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything we want to say? I mean, I know what that's like, to get kind of shuffled around. Isn't Neighborhood Services our kind of one-stop shop?
Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, not only Neighborhood Services, any department within the city, when they get a call, they are supposed to transfer it to appropriate department as dealing with that subject matter regardless. So we'll follow up. Mr. Calvert is taking notes to make sure that this doesn't happen in the future.
So forward it, as opposed to just telling the caller, you need to call another department? Yes, yes, that's good to know. So, this is not our practice, our policy. We just fell down on the job, which happens from time to time. So we apologize to Ms. Bruscha for that. Okay, I think we have some new business.
Yes, we have two items.
Okay.
I can go first.
Counselmember Kasakian?
I move that the city attorney is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement to utilize the legal services of Jarvis Fay LLC, Gabriel McWherter, to assist the city attorney and finance department with a matter. The agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap for the handling of said matter.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asatiran, Devine, Kasakian, Najarian, Mayor Brotman.
Yes, and we have another item?
Yes, right here. I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into and execute a legal services agreement with Brownstein Hyatt Farber Shrek LLP, further known as Brownstein, to represent the city as a real party in interest in the matter entitled Los Angeles Waterkeeper versus California State Water Resources Control Board and Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board, and real parties in interest. Case number 23STCP01492, the writ petition. The legal services agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a budget and fee cap for the handling of the writ petition. The city attorney is further authorized to execute a waiver of conflict of interest for Brownstein's joint representation of the cities of Glendale and Burbank in the writ position. The writ petition. The city attorney is further authorized to execute a joint defense agreement on behalf of the city, with the city of Burbank, for the coordination and sharing of confidential information and for the sharing of Brownstein's fees and costs in the writ petition litigation.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asatiran, Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Brotman.
Yes, and what is next?
German.
Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, in memory of Rasmig Gorgion.
I'll second that. Thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Okay, eight thirty-five. Not too bad.